Good morning, everyone. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I am the chair of this committee. And I am joined today by councilmembers Gordon, Conno, Reich, Council President Johnson, Councilmember Johnson, Yang, Quincy Worsami, Goodman, Frye, and Palmasano. And we are a quorum of the committee. We have nine items on our consent agenda. Many of them are ordinance introductions that are now being referred to staff. And so I will go through the consent agenda. The first item is regarding the City of Minneapolis Miniflex Plan. And this is authorizing execution of an amendment to the City of Minneapolis Miniflex Plan to allow the annual limit on pre-tax contribution to the health flexible spending account to increase with any cost of living adjustments assigned by the Internal Revenue Service. Item number two through item number nine, these are all ordinance updates that align with our plain language charter revision and then the required updates to our ordinance structure. And what we will be doing is, I will read through these, but then we will refer these to staff. So item two regards administration ordinances. Item three is regarding fire and protection. Item four is health and sanitation. Item five is licenses and business regulations. Item six is streets and sidewalks. Item seven is sewers and sewerage. Item eight is administration and enforcement. Item nine is general provisions. And actually, I should double-check with the clerk, were we intending to set a date?
December 3.
Pardon me?
December 3.
December 3 for a public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So we will be setting a date for the public hearing, December 3. And I'll just note that all of the ordinance changes are linked to the agenda. So the public and councilmembers have an opportunity to review these ordinance changes. Again, this is more administrative-type changes that align with the plain language charter revision. So with those items, I will move approval of the consent agenda as described. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Those items are approved. Next, we have two brief discussion items. The first is regarding the 2014 Promise Zone Initiative. Who is the presenter? Mr. Strobel, please approach. Welcome.
Chair Glidden, members of the committee, my name is Jay Strobel, and I am the deputy city coordinator here at the City of Minneapolis. Thank you for having me this morning. I'm here this morning just to share a little bit of background on what the Promise Zone opportunity is. As part of that process, we are looking at putting together an MOU. And that's before you as well, in terms of taking action on that. It's a key part of our application process. So just a bit of background on the Promise Zone. The Promise Zone is part of the Obama Administration's Ladder of Opportunity Agenda, using a place-based strategy and collective impact model to revitalize high-poverty communities across the country. It's seeking to do this relative to four broad outcomes that it would like to address as part of the program: creating jobs, increasing economic activity, reducing serious and violent crimes, and improving educational opportunities. Some of the benefits of the Promise Zone that I want to highlight, I think it's been well documented, that there, if you are to get the designation of a Promise Zone area, you do not necessarily get any direct dollars related to that. That said, I'd like to point out that two of the three areas that were designated Promise Zones last year were recently successful in getting to the tune of $36 million in the case of Los Angeles, $27.3 million in the case of San Antonio, for federal grants related to their Promise Zone efforts. So that is one of the benefits I wanted to highlight, is in terms of the resources that those Promise Zone areas did get. Other Promise Zone benefits are around that the federal government identifies up to five Vista volunteers to work with the local partners. They're actually housed, would be housed, in Minneapolis, and being able to work with the city and all of our partners in this effort. And the other benefit beyond just the program itself, I would say, is that for communities across the country, that the Promise Zone effort has served as just being a catalyst for community coordination. Without this effort, I think that all the work that's been leading up to our application process has clearly created a lot of coordination among the city, some of our key public partners, as well as some of our key nonprofits and for-profit partners as well. In terms of application requirements, it is a requirement that the local government must be either the lead or co-lead for any Promise Zone application. In addition to that, there's very specific requirements related to the geographic area that is targeted as a Promise Zone. The first is that the area must be contiguous. The second requirement is that the poverty rate must be greater than 33 percent. Vacancy rate must be higher than the city average, and that the area must be an area where there are significant violent crime that's higher than the city average. In a second, I'll get to kind of where we fall in terms of those requirements. In terms of the proposed boundaries of the Promise Zone, largely focused on North Minneapolis, as you see here, the north boundary, as proposed, would be Memorial Parkway, 45th Avenue, north. Eastern boundary would be the river. Western boundary would be Queen Avenue, north. Southern boundary would be Bassett Creek Valley. In terms of this particular geographic area, when you look at it and you drill into some of the statistics, the population is just shy of 39,000, poverty rate of over 40 percent. That said, the census tract where there's the greatest poverty is nearly 60 percent, an employment rate of 78 percent, vacancy rate of almost 14 percent. And this area includes significant portions of the city's violent crime hotspots. It's very important to note that the city is not, you know, going it alone in terms of this effort. Part of this is really trying to coordinate and coalesce existing work and potential future work across all the key partners that are working in this Promise Zone geographic area. We've had extensive conversations and meetings with a number of the public sector partners listed on this slide, as well as a number of the nonprofit folks as well. The folks listed on this slide, we regard as sort of our partners of highest magnitude in terms of this work. There are dozens of other partners that would be part of this effort as well. And then finally, in terms of key dates, the city did apply last fall. It's important to note that successfully, we did apply. So we've been interested and focused on this for about a year now. On September 16th, we had a gathering of key partners here in City Hall that was followed by a gathering, much bigger gathering, of about 140 partners on October 23rd at North High School. The application is due on the 21st of November, and then we should hear back in early 2015 whether we got the designation. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Strobel. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a bunch of questions about this. And I'm just wondering how we make this the promises-we-can't-keep zone? Because I've been through this before. We had an enterprise zone process that was kind of successful. We had an empowerment zone process that was kind of successful. And we make a lot of promises we can't keep when we get into these federal partnerships that don't really yield any actual results. And this is a group of people that I get the feeling want to see some actual results, not, "We're going to get everyone together and make some promises we can't keep." That's exactly kind of what it sounds like to me. So with that in mind, I'd like to know, how is this different than the enterprise zone effort that was in place in the '90s and early 2000s, and then the empowerment zone effort after that? The only difference, it looks like to me, is there's no money attached. So is it just a forum for all these different partners to get together to talk about the problems?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Goodman, I'm not familiar with enterprise zone, was not part of that effort or the other effort that you mentioned. You know, this has, the Promise Zone and the work leading up to this application, when we had 140 people at North High School on October 23rd, I think that there was a renewed sense of commitment. People recognized that there are a lot of plans, a lot of activities going on related to North Minneapolis, not only currently, but historically. I think there's no question. That said, there continues to be significant challenges with regard to that community. And I think in terms of the Promise Zone effort, they're very focused on us using a collective impact model, geographic focus model, to really bring all the key partners to the table, have a heightened sense of expectation around this work and coordination. And the feeling that I got on October 23rd, and for those who participated, were that this is different, that this is, people are very frustrated with the outcomes that we're seeing today, and that they are willing to come together and work in cooperation to make this successful.
So it sounds like this is exactly what happened with the empowerment zone and the enterprise zone effort, too. Everyone wants to get together to change the outcomes, to move the ball, but then nothing actually happens. So it could end up just like that, where we make a promise that we're going to participate in this federal program, and everyone's going to get together, and then nothing's going to happen? Because we've had two examples of this already. So I'm not sure what's different about this. And given what I heard you say, everyone got together, and there's a renewed sense of interest in solving these problems, and we're very hopeful that we can move the ball forward, I guess the only difference is there's no money to do it. We might be able to have this group apply for a grant. To do what, I'm not sure. To go to who, I don't understand. What kind of staff time is involved in this on our end?
So that's maybe, I'll just maybe, I just want to make sure we have the, because I think part of this was comment, which is fair, but the question about staff time, I think is a more specific question, Mr. Strobel.
Yeah. Chair Glidden, Councilmember Goodman, I think as part of the goals that were adopted by this body and the mayor, one of those goals was creating one Minneapolis and addressing the disparities of the city. And I think there's no question that North Minneapolis represents an area of significant disparities. And along those lines, the departments, the policymakers of this community, I think, are very dedicated and focused towards making the necessary staff commitments to address the disparities that are happening in North Minneapolis. And so it's hard for me to say exactly how much staff time has gone into this, how much staff time well. But without question, to address the size of the challenge that we have in parts of our community, we need to bring all the resources to bear to do that.
Okay. We do have two other people in queue. So, Councilmember Goodman?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's just very frustrating. I can't tell you how much time's gone into it. I can't tell you how much time is going to go into it. I can't tell you what the outcomes would be. I can't tell you how we're going to keep these promises. I can't tell you how much money we're going to get or what it's going to go for. And my concern is that this is just a promise out there that we're not going to be able to keep. And that is what the community doesn't want, is for us to just throw out there some federal program that we're going to hang an ornament on and say we're going to make a difference. I look at what you say the goals are, and they're to increase economic activity, create jobs, reduce crime, and improve educational opportunities. Isn't there any effort you can point to in these three categories? This Promise Zone's going to help us create jobs by. And then explain how? Otherwise, I feel like I'm just signing on to something that is not real.
And so, Mr. Strobel, maybe we'll just pause there, because I think this is, again, comments and reflected on this. And we do have two additional people in queue. Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, I really don't want to cut the discussion off about this, because this is a big deal. And Councilmember Yang and I met with the mayor last week. I gave her a list of six things. You know, I think if you look at these partners that we have at the table here, if the partners would actually be doing what they're supposed to be doing without this, and the new word is layering, layering. I hear collective impact, it's like new buzzwords, for the next zone. You know, park and rec word. Just the other day, my park commissioner, John Olson, pointed out that all of the spending on the Upper Riverfront, none of it includes anything for North Minneapolis. The park board's buying all kinds of land in northeast. What's the name of the new park, Councilmember Goodman? The, no, no, the one that they just put the plan out for. Water Works, Water Works, $25 million project, you know? They have bought no parcel in North Minneapolis. Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, they are over-concentrating Section 8 units in North Minneapolis. We have one-seventh of the population of the city. We have a third of the Section 8 units. Minneapolis Public Schools, they're not graduating our kids. This is huge. They need to do their job. City of Minneapolis, we need to do our job. We have half of the housing violations in this city, outstanding housing violations, are in North Minneapolis. We need more housing inspectors. These are things we could do ourselves. We applied for a federal grant, it is one budget ago, that we agreed to apply for a federal government grant for 10 extra police officers to address violent crime in North Minneapolis. Those people are not on the street yet. That has been one solid year ago that we did this. You know, University of Minnesota, the challenge for the University of Minnesota is that no kids from North Minneapolis go to the University of Minnesota. They can't get in. They're none of the kids that are in professional schools. I could go through this list of people. Now, what is layering and bringing people together going to produce to change these statistics? I think everybody needs to sit there and look at what their responsibility is in this whole system, and say, what are we doing to improve our services, to understand what the problems are? We've got hundreds, hundreds of vacant properties in North Minneapolis due to foreclosure, due to tornado, that have been unaddressed. They are sitting there rotting, right now, rotting. And by the time we can get a hold of them, five years, the guys that did the mortgage fraud are out of prison, and we're still dealing with the houses that are sitting there. And we don't have a housing director in this city. We haven't had one since the beginning of the year. Let's do our jobs and encourage these other people to do their jobs, and maybe we'd see something happen. Shame on us.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I share the same frustrations. And, you know, to Council President's point, there are a lot, I think, of low-hanging fruit that we can do outside of this Promise Zone application, and we can do well, and it would improve the lives and improve the condition of North Minneapolis. And, you know, I think, I mean, to Council President's point, to some extent, the things that we can control, we should do well, and we should do, I mean, in some ways, better than well, just so that we can get some stuff done and improve the lives up there. But, you know, I want to say this also, you know, this Promise Zone application, I'm hopeful that good things will come out of it. And I want to say that, you know, to Councilmember Goodman's point, you know, if we promise all these things in the Promise Zone, and then the second layer to this is that we are promising that even if we don't get this Promise Zone application accepted, and that the federal government says, you know, "We're not going to accept you guys," that we're still going to deliver on these promises, well, that's a lot of promises that we have to just say, you know what, we're going to do. And I think that's the part that just concerns me quite a bit, is that, to Councilperson Goodman's point, we don't want to overpromise. I mean, we've been overpromising for years and years, and we need to do a better job of just delivering. And so on the things that, you know, I would consider the low-hanging fruits, we can just do that. And, you know, hopefully, if anything, this spurs a conversation amongst every department in the city and all the elected officials as to what we really need to do to take care of just the low-hanging fruit. And, you know, by that, I mean, you know, what was mentioned earlier about, you know, more housing inspectors up on the north side. You know, we need to figure out what we're going to do with these vacant lots, these vacant homes on the north side, these vacant buildings. All the vacancies that happen up there that, you know, are city-owned, I mean, we can take care of those things pretty quickly. And the fact is, I mean, sometimes, you know, some of those lots have sat there for, I mean, I know one lot on the northeast corner of Plymouth and Emerson's been sitting there for 30 years, and that's our lot. And so, I mean, it's just a number of different things that just, I mean, baffle and concern me. But, you know, I will walk with this and just, you know, hope that good things will come out of this.
We have, Councilmember Bender is next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I totally understand the points that have been made. And having just come from the Results Minneapolis discussion of CPED, I can observe that our CPED staff are just, they're excellent employees who are stretched so thin and pulled in millions of directions. And certainly, we don't have the resources that we need to solve these problems. I guess, as I'm looking through this, it does seem helpful, if we can receive 25 to 30, 40 million dollars in federal investment, that seems helpful. And so, and I think that we're already doing a lot of things. We're putting a lot of staff time already into, you know, administering CDGB grants that are focused on rehabbing single-family homes in North Minneapolis. We are doing jobs training programs and support, you know, programs for small businesses in this geographic area. And so, is there a way that we can leverage our existing staff investments to make this a true, you know, leveraging of what we're already doing? And then, could you talk more about what Los Angeles and San Antonio have done with the federal money that they have received, or give us just sort of a better sense of some of the help that we could anticipate receiving from these resources?
Sure. Chair Glidden, Councilmember Bender, just to take a step back for a second, for all the reasons that have been brought up in terms of the challenges that Council President mentioned, that Councilmember Yang mentioned, that Councilmember Goodman mentioned, this is the exact reason why we need to have a very focused and intentional effort in North Minneapolis. The Promise Zone, regardless of whatever you want to call it, is meant to be that type of effort. And it is meant to bring us together, even us within the city, together to have that focused effort. It's also meant to help bring our partners together along the same lines, to have a coordinated strategy. I understand the frustration that's represented here. And again, that's the exact reason why we think that the Promise Zone is essential and important. The other thing that's going to be shared with you all today is, since the October 23rd meeting, we've had extensive conversations with the partners I listed on the previous slide, folks within the city, about the very specific goals, subgoals, and strategies and actions that would comprise the outline of the application. I think that you'll see within their renewed focus in the specifics that you're asking me about today. At this moment, my preference is not to share this, you know, assuming we do go ahead with the application, you know, some of these things, we're competing against other cities. So my preference is to not share this publicly at the moment, but we're prepared to sort of, you know, share that.
I guess if I may, Madam Chair, just make a comment that I think it would be helpful, potentially as a follow-up to this, to sort of, and maybe in the future going forward, as we just discussed again in the Results Minneapolis, is to sort of outline more holistically all of the resources that we are putting into our two racially concentrated areas of poverty, this one, and as well as the other in central Minneapolis. And to summarize all of the staff resources that we're putting there, and making sure that we're being strategic, making sure that we're communicating both with the community and hearing from the community how those resources are working or not. Because again, I think we are already putting in a significant amount of staff time and resources into this geographic area of the city. And if we can do that and leverage $30 million of investment, I don't see why we wouldn't do that. And so that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bender. I will note that we've been joined by the mayor. I'm sure she will want to comment. We do have a lineup right now of Councilmember Frye, then Gordon, then Andrew Johnson. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the biggest things I think that I've realized since I've gotten on the city council at the beginning of this year is the difference between talking progressive and acting progressive. You know, talking progressive is holding a meeting. Talking progressive is creating a task force. Talking progressive is, you know, bringing communities together and collaborating and blah, 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 blah. And, you know, for the most part, they're all catchphrases that result in our city, which I think has more 501(c)(3)'s than anywhere in the entire country, becoming less of a Minneapolis and more of a Meetingapolis. And yeah, it is frustrating when no results are produced out of it, and when there's minimal money that emanates from some jurisdiction that we're not aware of. So I am definitely concerned about this. You know, one of, a quote that I think many of our friends, Fabian Hoffner, always tells me, and this is actually an appropriate quote, is, "Talk is cheap, but whiskey costs money." And I want to see exactly what the result is going to be in terms of money. You know, looking at, Los Angeles got 36 million, San Antonio got 27.3 million. That's nothing to be scoffed at there. It's, there's pretty hefty figures. And was it the creation of this zone that triggered the grant to go to them? Because if it's not, we can still fill out the application, we can still apply for the grant, and we're still on the same footing in terms of getting the dollars in the end.
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Frye, our understanding from the federal government is that preferential treatment is being given to entities that are designated Promise Zones. There are now, when we're applying for federal grants, there's a checkbox of, are you a Promise Zone community? And that is something that was not in place last year, and that we are beginning to see that as part of our grant applications.
I'm sorry, say that one more time? So preference is given when you create a zone?
Preference is given when you're a designated Promise Zone community.
So you apply for the zone, and if you, do we have to then get accepted as a zone?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Frye, correct.
Okay. So just to understand the process, we designate in a zone, or we apply to be designated as a zone, we get accepted as this, as one of the, how many Promise Zones would there be then?
There's expected to be 20 Promise Zones for the nation. Three-fifths of those would be in urban areas. So 15 of the 20 would be in urban areas.
Okay. And then are all those 20 designees getting money?
Not necessarily. The money comes in, in cases where we apply for other federal grants, whether it be for public safety, whether it be for economic development. We would identify ourselves as being a Promise Zone designee, and that would give us additional points as part of the federal government's process for identifying who would receive those other grant dollars.
Okay. I mean, so we already apply to the federal government as a city, and all these 501(c)(3)'s also apply many times. So this would just give us a little bit of a bump? Is that what you're saying?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Frye, correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. And I'm very supportive of moving forward with this designation. I recognize that a lot of this work is being done through the mayor's office moving forward. And I actually think it would be kind of irresponsible for us not to seek this. We're going to have cities throughout the country that are competing to be for this designation. It's set up by the federal government, and if we already qualify based on the measures, it seems like it would be foolish for us not to try to get the designation. I also understand that once we get the designation, there are some benefits that will come to us even without qualifying for some grant funding. Isn't there a commitment that there will be federal staff that will work with the city and help bring us other resources? And also a commitment that there'll be some Vista volunteers and others that will be available to us? So even without the big awards that San Antonio and Los Angeles gets, that I'm certainly hopeful we might also get, there are some benefits that potentially would come right away. Is that correct?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, that is correct. Five Vista volunteers in addition to technical support from the federal government.
And we wouldn't necessarily have federal staff coming and working in Minneapolis, but we would be given some contacts in the federal government that we would work with in Washington. Is that correct?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, our understanding is that the Vista volunteers would be here onsite, that they would be supervised by the city. would be here onsite, that they would be supervised by the city. The additional technical resources from a variety of federal agencies would not be onsite, but they would be to support the efforts of our, of our Promise Zone work.
Well, I think one of the, it's maybe unfortunate that we have the name that's been designated as Promise Zone. I certainly see positives to that and why it was an appealing name. I think we have to be realistic and, and say that we're not going to solve every problem because we're doing this. But I think we should definitely move forward and that it's the responsible thing to do. And if we can get some more resources and some more assistance to help us deal with the very serious problems we're facing, I think we should do so.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I totally understand the frustrations of some of my colleagues, especially around the partners and the work output that's being done and the need to increase their efforts and focus on North Minneapolis. And I also understand the frustrations around past promises and past initiatives and past programs that have taken place. But administrations have changed, staff and leaders have changed, iterations have been made on these programs. And at the end of the day, if we're able to put more people at the table to focus on this area, that gives us an edge when we seek resources in terms of being able to have preference, then it's a good thing. It's better than not doing it at all. So, I just want to make sure that we're very careful in terms of what we're messaging out as well to the community. Because solving disparities within our community is not, there's no panacea for it. This isn't the end-all, be-all to that. There's so many efforts taking place, so many different things that we need to be doing. And this is one of those things that can add some value. But even when we look at things such as what Los Angeles has received, that's a big city. I don't expect we're going to get 36 million. I would be blown away if we did. That would be wonderful, right? But we shouldn't sell it as potentially bringing in tens of millions and what have you to North Minneapolis. I think at this point, all we know is it brings more people to the table and gives us an edge, which is a welcome thing. And I thank the mayor's office for working on this and the other initiatives to help bring more resources and attention to North Minneapolis.
Thank you. And the mayor has been in queue. Evan Wachibas and, so, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And thank you all for letting me be part of your committee this morning. I, I think a comparison of the downsides of applying versus the upside of application are pretty clear. And I, and I hear and I, I understand the cynicism and the frustration that people have, you know, that one of the downsides would be just playing into cynicism and frustration that people have and the potential that, hey, maybe this won't work. I will note that in the planning meeting that happened, there were 150-plus people who do work in North Minneapolis coming together in a room, not just to talk progressive, but to figure out how in a coordinated way they can actually act progressive. This is a group of people who themselves have been doing this work, who themselves have been feeling fractured and fragmented over time, have found some hope in the idea that they could all pull together, government, nonprofit, philanthropy, private sector, all come together, public safety. We have the sheriff's office there, fire department, our police department, could all come together in a coordinated way and have a plan that would actually lead to action and lead to some results, building on the work that had already been done, making them feel like, first of all, I helped, you know, that we helped get to this place where we're ready, you know, to coordinate and have a launching pad. And as far as I know, that's the largest meeting in years of people who wanted to get together and come together and put together action plan regarding some of the challenges faced in the area. So, it is true, maybe we won't get the results and it'll play into the cynicism, but we know we won't get the results. We know that we won't get the same level of coordination if we don't do it. The other downside is, you know, and I hear people talking about it, is how much city staff time is going into this. Well, first of all, how much city staff time is already going into the city's part of the work that's happening in North Minneapolis? It's a fair amount. What it would be, you know, on top of that would be some coordination. I have put a recommendation and proposal in the budget for more, for some folks in the city coordinator's office, whose job it would be to help make this work happen in addition to the bodies on the ground that the federal government would be willing to put in if we were to get the designation. The upside, if accepted, we do get preference in other grants. And I know that folks at the White House and folks at the federal level are eager to have more Midwestern cities involved in the promise, you know, getting Promise Zone designations, to do that work in the Midwest, that we are in a very good position to get this, better than we were before, first of all, because of the wide swath of people who've come together for this application, but also because we are now a burn grant recipient, we have a promised neighborhood, we are a Juvenile Justice Forum city. We have a number of things in place now that make us in a better position to both get the designation and then be able to use the designation when we get it. And I know that at the federal level, they want to see us succeed. The conversations that I've had and I know that others have had really indicate that clearly. And it's a coordination of action and intention. It's a coordination of putting together the resources, you know, getting folks in a room. And we know here at the city what happens if we come up with a plan. We actually get results, far better results than when we didn't have plans. Youth Violence Prevention, Climate Action Plan, Heading Home Honeypen, our Transit Action Plan that we put together eight or nine years ago, all of them because we had a plan. Folks in the region have been able to come together around that plan. And funders at the government level, at the philanthropic level, have wanted to invest in the plan that we have put together because we have one and we know what we're doing. And, you know, we have some concerted action moving forward. These Promise Zone designations have led to, as has already been noted, a lot of success in other cities around the country, that more dollars have flowed in, but that also they're getting results for the people in those zones, which is means getting results for the people of those cities. Because our entire city, the health and wealth and prosperity of our entire city rests on making sure that North Minneapolis, as well as Central Minneapolis, are doing well and doing better and, and are able to participate in our growth and in our success. And this is an opportunity for us to come together as a city and really build on the work that's already been done, to help focus and concentrate the work that we are already doing as a city. And help do that in alignment with all sorts of other partners, some of whom have not been at the table before, but are willing and eager to come together now as part of this. And that the feedback we've gotten is that people definitely feel a sense of momentum and people feel a sense of hope. And that is in part because of who's sitting in this room. One of the reasons people wanted to get together in that room is because they know that there's new leadership at the city. They know that there's a new mayor. They know that there are new city council members and returning city council members, all of whom campaigned on issues of equity, all of whom campaigned on actually getting something done, and who have made it a focus and a trademark of the work that we are doing for this city. And that, the energy that we have provided to them is part of the reason that they were, that they are willing and eager to come into the room and have renewed hope. It's not, I think it's on us to make sure that it's not false hope, at least on the end that we can provide. And so, I would, you know, I am asking that we move forward with this application for the designation. I think there's a lot in it for the city, that the upsides of doing it are significant, you know, even compared to the downsides, which I acknowledge there, there are potentially a couple of downsides. But that for the long-term health of the city, this is one tool in our toolbox that we would really be able to utilize and utilize well for the people of Minneapolis.
Okay, thank you. Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I guess my, my question is, what is our action today? And Mr. Strobel, if you have a document about goals and, and the outcomes of this 150-person workshop, which unfortunately did not fit into my schedule, so that's another issue that I'm really cranked about, having lived my, my whole life in this community, represented it for 17 years. If there's information out there, I want it shared with us quickly so that we know what we're signing onto. I, I find this really frustrating, this process going forward without, with very little input from the people that live in the community. I will bet you, Madam Mayor, 150 people showed up there. If there were 10 people out of that 150 that actually lived in North Minneapolis, I would be shocked. That's the problem. That's the problem. There are a lot of people doing work in North Minneapolis, getting a paycheck, you know, patting themselves on their back because they're, they're doing the right thing. But it doesn't trickle down and the, the superstructure, the infrastructure does not represent that community. And so, that's what I find, I find really frustrating. So, if there's information, I want to know exactly what we're signing onto today with this application. I want to see every word that is going to the federal government before I say yes.
Chair Glenn, President Johnson, we have done the work since October 23rd. It's taken a lot of work to take work of that day and have subsequent conversations to share the outline of what we'd be submitting to the federal government with all of the council members, the mayor. This work just concluded yesterday, in fact. People were working on their day off to finish this work. It is not the final application because we still have, you know, 10 or so days left to, to put that final touch together. But we do have an outline and specifics that we can share with you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Strobel, I have a few questions because I haven't seen anything around the Promise Zone until this morning. The first is, is it reasonable to expect that our amount of funding, if allocated, would be proportional to the size of our city? Because we are about a third the size of San Antonio. So, I think we have to be careful about, you know, kind of false expectations. The second question I had is, do you believe that our intergovernmental partners will be able to use this Promise Zone area as leverage to be able to get grants within that space? Meaning transit is super important. And the third one is, would this money be already designated to specific activities based on the application?
Chair Glenn, Councilmember Palmasano, with regard to the, the first question in terms of the volume of money, you know, each grant has different parameters to it. Due to the sheer size of Minneapolis relative to San Antonio, the, they're not comparing necessarily the population of the entire city versus the population of the entire city. The area of Promise Zone can vary from 10,000 up to 200,000, as the slide said. And in most cases, they're not, I, I wouldn't say that the grant dollar amounts are related to the overall population size of our community. They may be related to the size of the Promise Zone itself potentially, but I'm not really in a position to say that. In terms of your second question, with regard to our partners benefiting from the Promise Zone designation, yes, without question, they would be able to, if they're applying for federal grants separate from the city, they would be able to identify themselves relative to the, the community being a Promise Zone designated area and would benefit from the Promise Zone designation. So, partners such as, you know, the state, Metropolitan Council, the county, so on, would definitely benefit as well as other nonprofit partners. And then, the third question, just quickly remind me.
Yeah. Madam Chair, Mr. Strobel, the third question was about if we do get allocated money, is it already designated for specific activities?
Chair Glenn, Councilmember Palmasano, the money that we would be applying for, whatever specific parameters that that grant would have relative, so it's not, it's not just a generic, here's 20 million dollars. It's we would be applying for dollars relative to economic development, or we would be applying for dollars relative to public safety. So, the expenditures of that would have to be specific to that grant that we had received.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Kana.
Thank you, Council Vice President Glenn. So, Jay, thank you for bringing this forward. And I'd like to see a copy of the final application once it's submitted. And the mayor's office did talk to me about this before it came today. And I reached out to Council President Johnson just to get a more context or understanding of what was happening. So, I hope that there's some of the feedback that the president shared with me can be incorporated into the application and, and really align the council and the mayor's office on, on this initiative. I do want to acknowledge the organizing work of the North Minneapolis folks because it makes sense to me that we try to leverage those resources, whether they're NGO resources, philanthropy resources, private sector resources. I think leveraging dollars makes sense. I think the piece where I do really want the city to do more work on in relationship to future investment through Promise Zone dollars are really what it, where is our money going? You know, and it's connected to Councilmember Bender's comments about CPED's resources. And I've been spending a lot of time working with CPED staff, trying to get answers to questions about investment in communities of color and low-income neighborhoods where I don't see the jobs that we're seeing we're supposed to be creating. And so, we end up giving a lot of money to organizations that are supposed to give us a return on our investment. And I'm not quite seeing proof or evidence of that. And so, I'm asking those questions. And I would encourage us to really look at evaluation methods to maybe pause and reflect on the work that we've been doing through CPED and investing in the racially concentrated areas of poverty in our city, which happened to include an area that I represent. I know Councilmember Warserma represents that. I know that Councilmember Blang Yang, Council President Johnson, and Councilmember Kevin Reich all touch and represent those areas, as well as, I think, Council President, Council Vice President Glenn. So, this is really important for, for me. If we're going to get more money in the future and if we're going to help organizations get that money and use it on the ground, then I think we as a city have to do the due diligence of analyzing how our investment has gone in the past, how are we investing in cultural development work, where, where is the proof that these dollars have given us what we say is our intended outcome? So, with that, I'll, I'll just, I'll just say that I'll need the help of our colleagues to get that done. And I hope that I can get the, certainly the mayor's office support on this and looking at these issues. And also, the city coordinator and Spencer Crong to help us engage CPED and to get Craig Taylor to also examine these concerns. Because sometimes when I ask these questions of the staff, I'm asked to do it myself. And that's inappropriate. I do not want to spend my time researching and identifying the trends and looking for the data when the staff should have this information. So, I need the tools to be able to do my work properly and I need the tools to be able to represent my community, to guide the policy. I don't want to get stuck in the weeds of coming up with the evaluation mechanisms and the spreadsheets and the Excel documents that point us in that direction. So, that's where I need the support to do this work. And that's where I need the support to be able to make sure that this Promise Zone application is successful for the entire city. Because when North Minneapolis wins, we all win. So, I want to make sure that if I'm supporting that, that, that I do have the backup and internal system to support those efforts.
Okay. Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Palmasano asked a couple of the questions that I was going to be focusing on because I wanted to know about the size of the district. I saw the slide, of course, but I wanted to see. And then, it occurred to me, I, I'm really not in the mood to be chasing money, but I think one of the great benefits of this particular initiative and seeking a designation, which I'm supportive of, really helps us internally examine how we go about things. So, I wanted to acknowledge the work of the coordinator's office and all of the departments that really went into just working on this application. And then, when we get to that, man, maybe we've learned some things through that process that we can really apply to across the city. And it really may free up some resources for us to focus on both internal business plans and operations, as well as how we're connecting with the rest of our city through this learned experience. So, one of the questions I had that hasn't been asked yet is, is there a relationship between Promise Zone designation communities, on how they work with each other, how they share positive experiences and, and things that have, you know, been negative that they need to work on? Is there a sharing of information between designated cities?
Chair Glenn, Councilmember Quincy, Promise Zone is a very new initiative. Last year, or actually, at the beginning of this year was the first year where they designated the first five Promise Zone areas. Our understanding is that there will be sharing among the different communities that receive the Promise Zone designation. And I think that that would clearly be a benefit to to all the communities involved that receive such designations. I also think for communities that don't receive the designation, that there will be benefits and learnings as well from what proves to be successful throughout the country.
Thank you. And just one final kind of question. What's the support level from our federal delegation, Senators Franken, Klobuchar, Congressman Ellison?
Yeah. Chair Glenn, Councilmember Quincy, I believe that, you know, last year we received letters of support from each of our federal members, and I know that we're in pursuit of those same letters of support this time around as well.
It just strikes me that it's important to work in concert with our federal delegation because we're going to be asking them to do some of the heavy lifting at the federal level in assistance to that designation.
Chair Glenn, Councilmember Quincy, just been informed that we have three letters of support from a federal delegation.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. We have Councilmember Goodman, correct? Okay. Councilmember Goodman, Councilmember Worsami, and the mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad you brought up the issue of the federal government. Were you all here for the election that happened a week ago? We're in the minority in the House and Senate at the federal level, starting in January. So I'm sure these tax breaks, these for jobs created are going to pass right through the Republican-controlled legislature at the federal level. We are in a new era at the state, not controlling both chambers, and at the federal level, not controlling either chamber. So the promise that the federal government is going to come through with a bunch of money for any of these initiatives, despite the president's good work on that, I'm skeptical. So I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember Quincy, because that was one of the things I was going to mention anyway. Mr. Struble, I'm interested in, the mayor rightly pointed out a whole list of other designations we have. We're a burn city, we're a promised neighborhood, and there are a whole bunch of other ones. I'm interested in what outcomes have come from all of those designations. Not what federal money we got, but what outcomes changed in the end as a result of having those designations. Perhaps it would be illustrative to see how much money we got as a result of having those designations, or what resources were dedicated to the north side Achievement Zone or other organizations that got federal money, and what their actual outcomes were. Because I think what you're, the frustration you're feeling from myself, and perhaps Council President Johnson, I don't speak for her, is too many times that promises have been made where outcomes have not changed. So this isn't about not wanting to do something, it's about becoming frustrated with not having change in outcomes. And I'll give you an example. In our committee in CD, three years ago, we did an RFP for a parcel of property in North Minneapolis to build a grocery store. So a food island in North Minneapolis at Penn and Plymouth, where we had great hope that a grocery store was going to be built, and we found a local person to be able to do it. When he came in front of us, we essentially, we showered praise on him. Thank gosh, you've come along and been able to do this project, and anything we can do to support you, we will do to support you. And then he came back and said, well, I haven't been able to get the funding I need, I need another year of extension. And I said to him at that point, please don't disappoint us. There has been too much disappointment in North Minneapolis on this very simple issue of food desert and access to healthy food. And I got an email a couple of days ago that the project is dead, that they haven't been able to get the project off the ground. Too many individual examples like that exist where we can't even as a community of 150 stakeholders rally to get a frickin' grocery store built in North Minneapolis. So, and that's a very specific project where we have some level of control and ability, it's our land, we did an RFP, we worked with the community. I just don't see how this large promise gives us any hope of any actual results. And that is the frustration you hear from people who have been here a really long time. I don't want to leave the city council in my retirement and know that the exact same problems that I came into 18 years ago have not moved the dial on equity at all. And this seems to me to be a lot of window dressing without very much guarantee. Because at this point, I feel like I need a guarantee of a change in the situation for people who so desperately need it and are relying on us. With this new council and the new mayor, they're relying on us to actually make a difference, and this to me looks like something we're tossing out there as an idea that perhaps isn't going to make any change either.
Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Struble, I have two questions. One is, it seems like some council members, and I'm one of them, are blindsided by this whole thing. We haven't got a lot of information with regards to the Promise Zone and how it works and what it entails. So that's one thing. The other thing is, how have Promise Zones affected other areas of concentration of poverty? For example, the case in Los Angeles and the case in San Antonio. I represent an area that has unique challenges. So how will all this attention being given to the North Minneapolis and all of this research and all the staff time, how will that affect areas of needs such as the area that I represent, the area that Alundra represents, and other areas of concentration of poverty? So that's my two questions.
Chair Glenn, Councilmember Worsami, in terms of the not having information, my understanding is that the mayor's office staff made attempts at meeting with each of the council members, and if they couldn't meet with the council members, met with your staff. And my understanding is that your staff is, who connected with the mayor's office. So that's the first thing. We apologize when we weren't able to connect with everybody on this issue, but we did make efforts to do briefings with all council members. So that's the first piece. In terms of the Promise Zone, again, because this is a very new initiative, we have not had, you know, because the initial Promise Zone areas that received the designation are just beginning to put their plan in place, we haven't seen, you know, the results of those efforts yet. And, you know, we are all eagerly awaiting to see kind of what some of those results are, what is working, what's not working in those communities, to see what lessons we might be able to learn from them and apply in Minneapolis.
All right. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Councilmember Palmasano and others have touched on sort of more detail around the what could be done with the Promise Zone set of dollars if they were to come to fruition. And I guess I want to, not that you have to answer this in any detail today, but moving forward as we consider this, it would be very important to know what are some of the whos that we think would be involved. It's one thing to have several hundred people show up, but will this be sort of a thousand points of light kind of effort where everyone gets to do their little piece, or will be more concentrated in target areas? I mean, if we had $20 million that could go to, say, a coalition of PPL and Urban Homeworks, which were listed there, you know, they could knock out 1,000 units in five years. Acquired, stabilized, or rebuilt with $20 million. If we could quadruple the capacity of Way to Grow and Step Up, proven programs that do provide jobs for youth and support services for young families, we could really do a lot. As a matter of fact, the population needs, when we did a rough calculation on an envelope with some of these representatives, an extra $10 million over five years could knock out and serve a lot of families with proven programs. And so I guess as we have this conversation, I'm going to be very keen on the contemplated who will be involved, let alone what they intend to do. Because that goes to the how. People who, groups that have done and delivered, we know what they will do, we know how they will do it, and we know the outcomes. It's just a matter of scale. So I just throw that out there, not, don't need an answer on the fly, but these are the things that will, that's the lens I will have as we move forward with this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing further comment. I'm just double, oh, I am sorry. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. And there were just some questions asked that I wanted to provide clarity for, for council members. The federal delegation is supportive. I have had personal conversations with both Congressman Ellison and Senator Franken's staff about this and do intend to pursue letters of support. A lot of the grants for which we would be eligible are already in process, and so would be harder to unwind. As for the burn grant that we have, that is new, we got it a few weeks ago, so the results are not in on that one. For NAS, I would be happy to sit down and walk through, I sit on the board. The results for the kids and the families are coming in, and there's a lot of positive results happening for those kids and those families in the promised neighborhood. For the forum, it is, again, a relatively new designation, but what it's designed to do is support the work that we're doing on youth violence prevention and a sharing of best practices as we move forward on that. And we know that the Youth Violence Prevention Plan has had positive impacts for the city. And to the question, for council members who didn't get a personal conversation, I know that everybody's, either staff or council members were talked to. Only one office, I think, we weren't able to meet with yet, a meeting was canceled. But for anybody else, any council members that want to have a one-on-one yourselves, I am happy to do that one-on-one with you, to talk about the Promise Zone and the benefits of it, anytime we can figure that out. So, you know, I think a lot of questions have been asked, I think a lot of great questions have been raised about, you know, what we can or can't do here, what, you know, what is the form and format of this going to be? The one thing I would say is, if we don't want to move forward with things in North Minneapolis because we've moved forward on so many things that haven't worked, that is an argument for doing nothing. And so I don't want us to do nothing, and I think this is a big something we could do that could have significant results with a lot of partners.
Thank you. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I should probably let the mayor have the last word, but I did have another thought that I wanted to share, which is that, you know, I think every time we discuss this general topic, we hear a sense of urgency from policymakers in Minneapolis to take action. And I think that's a good thing. I don't understand how us not applying for this potential resources, even if we don't get them, I don't understand how not taking that action would help us achieve our goals. I hope that we will move forward with this, I'm supportive of this. It sounds like there's a lot of interest from policymakers to get more information and to contribute more to the very specifics of this, which I think is a good thing. But I guess I would just say that, you know, I'm excited to hear the passion and the commitment to taking action as soon as possible to close our equity gaps in the city, and I hope we can all continue to work together toward taking that action. You know, that's our jobs here. And, you know, if, I know there's not agreement on exactly how to do it, but, I mean, I think what we are hearing is a resounding commitment from policymakers in Minneapolis to take this on, to take action, to move quickly. And I think we have a number of proven, you know, nationally recognized examples of how we are taking action in this city that we should build on and continue to look for new opportunities. So I'm very supportive of us moving forward with this application.
Councilmember Gordon.
I think this has been a helpful and interesting conversation, and I would like to move the staff recommendation to authorize city officials to prepare and execute the preliminary memorandum of understanding and also to develop and submit the 2014 Promise Zone application.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. I do think that we are now at the end of comment, and I will have a brief comment. Then we have the motion in front of us, and folks can read that action. Again, I want to clarify that this is authorizing the execution of the preliminary memorandum of understanding, and it's authorizing city staff to submit the Promise Zone application. I do know there's interest in seeing that application as soon as possible, and so I just want to make sure that that is clear, and I'm sure that you have heard that about the details. This actually has been, I think, a really fruitful discussion. There's some big positives that I heard in this discussion, one of which is that you heard a lot of policymakers with an interest in focusing on outcomes. I think that's often a criticism that you hear about policymakers, is that we want to focus on the initiative or the program, and what you're hearing here is a real commitment to focusing on those outcomes, wanting to understand how our own departments that we control and we fund are able to contribute to those outcome changes. And so I just want to say, I really appreciate that, especially from both council members who have been through, here through other initiatives, and new council members as well. I also want to appreciate Councilmember Reich's very specific comments about how to leverage things that, I guess I would also agree, have a proven track record and have worked, and how we can make the most of any dollars that we might be able to get. I think that, in fact, is an argument that we do want to both continue working harder on what we can do right now, but getting additional funding would produce some measurable results, especially if we really target this to programs that have a track record that we know work and that we can design in a way to contribute to specific outcomes. So I really appreciate that specificity. I will be supporting this today. Again, what I heard were concerns about how we're able to focus on the outcomes, not that we shouldn't do what we can do to seek additional resources to support our efforts. Thank you for calling for the vote, Councilmember Gordon. I'll ask if there is any additional discussion. Seeing none, on approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that item, and one abstention?
Two.
And two abstentions, and that item is approved. Thank you very much, Mr. Struble. I'm going to move us along here. We have one additional item that I think will be a short description, and this is about Health Reimbursement Arrangement Plan Amendment. Ms. Traver, thank you so much.
Okay. Chair Glenn, council members, thank you for the opportunity to discuss the amendment to the city's Health Reimbursement Arrangement Plan, commonly known as the VIBA. The amendment would establish a separate plan for retired participants. It would outline how participants would transition to the retiree-only plan when they separate from service with the city, and it would clarify that only retired participants can use their HRA funds to pay for insurance premiums. The reason we're doing this is the impact of one of the Affordable Care Act market reform provisions. The Affordable Care Act is a huge piece of legislation that has sometimes surprising impacts on our healthcare plans. One of the, what's called one of the market provisions of that act restricts the use of HRA funds to pay for individual insurance premiums. So that there are, it exempts retiree-only plans from that prohibition. The reason that we need to find a solution for that market reform provision is that one is to just stay in general compliance with the law, but that market, there are specific penalties in the law for any violation of these market reform provisions. They can be huge, up to $100 a day for each violation for each participant, to an annual limit of $500,000 a year. So it's important that we found a way for our HRA to comply with that provision. Employees in HR and in city attorneys, along with labor representatives, and our benefit advisors, an outside attorney, our claims administrator, reviewed various alternatives, and the alternative that best fit the needs of the city and the plan participants was to create a retiree-only plan. So what this will mean for plan participants is that all participants can continue to use funds in their accounts to pay for medical, dental, vision care expenses that aren't covered by any other plans. But only retired participants can use funds to pay for individual insurance premiums, things like Medicare premiums, Medicare supplements, or insurance purchase through one of the marketplace exchanges. And what we're using as a definition for retired participant is the same definition that's used in state law to define who is eligible for retiree continuation. It would essentially mean anybody who's in the para-coordinated plan and leaves the city after age 55, or anybody who's in the para-police and fire plan who leaves the city after age 50.
All right. Thank you very much. We thought it would be appropriate just to have a brief presentation here because anytime there is a change or an impact to benefits, I think we want to make sure that folks are able to have their questions answered. I will go ahead and move approval of this amendment to the City of Minneapolis Health Reimbursement Arrangement Plan. Is there any discussion of that? Seeing none, on approval, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? And that item was approved. Aye, opposed, and that item was approved. Next, we are turning to reports of committees, and first is Community Development and Regulatory Services. With that, Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're bringing forward nine items for approval Friday morning. Item number one is revenue bond refinancing for Alina Health Systems for their Faribault and Hastings Clinic. Item number two are the regular beer gambling and liquor license applications. Item three is allowing Hennepin County Housing Redevelopment Authority to sell four properties in the city for adult foster care facilities. Item four is an agreement on rental licensing. Item five is reinstating a rental license. Item six is reinstating a rental license. Item seven is probably the largest item on our agenda, it's the Code 42 expansion at One Main Street. This is authorizing the city to apply for two grants, up to $1 million each, that are for forgivable loans for their expansion at the current location, and there's also a second at their potential new location in the 10th Ward. Item number eight is a grant for Livable Communities Demonstration Account. And item number nine is a long list of levy special assessments that we send to the county. This is essentially telling them what the assessments will be. With that, I'll answer questions on items one through nine.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement with Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing four items forward for approval. One is granting a liquor license for a surly brewing company that came to our committee because of some scheduling mix-ups with the week. The second is related to uncontracted neighborhood funds, and we moved three staff directions, all having to do with making sure that more information is posted online. The third item is authorizing an amendment to a contract with Minnesota Remodeling and Restoration Company for an extension at no cost through May 31, 2015. And the fourth is authorizing a contract with the Minnesota Department of Health to accept estimated $10,000 to provide healthy home services in the Latino immigrant community. Happy to stand for questions.
Thank you. There are no action items for intergovernmental relations, so we will turn to Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management. With that, Chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have one item to bring on Friday, and that's to authorize an extension of a contract with Corner House for forensic interview services for children and vulnerable adults, extending by one year and increasing the contract to $155,607, and to authorize execution of documents necessary to effectuate the agreement. And if I'm, if I may have a comment about two items that are not on the public safety agenda, I just wanted to quickly note that we brought in the Minneapolis Police Department to now give us an overview of the body cams that were rolled out on Friday. And the second thing that happened was that, you know, we got civil rights to come in to give us quarterly reports, which hadn't happened in a long time, and so, yep.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Yang. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works, with that, Chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be forwarding eight items for full council's consideration Friday. Item one regards a non-governmental tax exempt parcel streetlight operation fee assessment, and that's a passage resolution adopting the levy and assessments for 2015. I'll note to council members that I'll be forwarding a distributed amendment to that that will remove a property that has changed its tax status per the policy. Item two is a non-governmental tax exempt parcel street maintenance assessments for 2015. Item three is the levy for the 2014 Public Works Department's special assessments, to approve those special assessments. Item four is the Special Service District Advisory Board's appointees. There's a full list of both the Special Service Districts and the appointees. Item five is the Special Service District Consulting Services. These are services that provide support for the activities of the department. Item six is the Municipal Parking System Management RFP, and that'll solicit proposals for management and operations of our ramp system. The following items refer to Ways and Means Committee. Item seven is the regional solicitation of the federal transportation funds. And then item eight is a couple, one low bid and one single bid for material and services for the department. I'll stand for any questions, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Reich. Next, we have Ways and Means with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are eight items on the Ways and Means Agenda for your consideration Friday. The first item is our three legal settlements. Second item is the execution of an amendment to professional services agreement with CM Partners for negotiation skills training. Third item is acceptance of low bid with Premier Electrical Corporation at the Convention Center for RGB LED up light retrofit project. Then there's also the approval of a joint powers agreement with the City of Minneapolis, Edina, St. Anthony, Brooklyn Center, and Golden Valley to assess unpaid fees due to the city, Minneapolis. We also have the approval of the special assessments for delinquent utility charges and the adoption of that assessment role. Then item number six would be the authorization, extension of a contract with HLP for pet licensing, maintenance, and support. And the seventh item is the authorization with, increasing the contract with Iceberg Technology Group for PeopleSoft System Administration. And the final item on the agenda is the negotiation, execution of, an extension of a contract with Meet Minneapolis for a five-year period. So that is just extending the original agreement that we have with Meet Minneapolis with some, several significant changes in that contract. I'm happy to answer any of those questions on those items. I also wanted to highlight, if I could, Madam Chair, the conclusion of our department budget hearings. We've had 27 over the last couple of months of those budget hearings as we're considering the recommended budget for 2015. Wanted to highlight some important dates coming up. The Truth and Taxation Statement Hearing, where we're going to hear public comment, is on November 18, and then we'll be taking up the Budget Committee, which is all members of the council, of course, on December 1 and on December 2, with a final public hearing and adoption of the budget on December 10. Happy to stand for any other questions.
Thank you. Not seeing any council member Bender with zoning and planning.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have five items to forward from zoning and planning. The first is at 2215 Snelling Avenue to approve an interim use permit to allow a doggy daycare there. The second is at 2300 Milwaukee Avenue. We voted to support granting an appeals filed by property owners there to allow a larger side porch and deck than is currently allowed. And had a nice discussion, actually, about some future policy changes that may need to happen there in the Milwaukee Avenue Historic District. Item number three is at Hampton Inn and Suites at 2812 University Avenue Southeast to rezone from C2 to C3A to allow for a hotel. Item number four is approval of an application to vacate the street and sidewalk easement for the Cedar Cultural Center Plaza. And item number five is approval of a street vacation related to the reconnection of 22nd Street East to Cedar Avenue.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing questions with that. We have concluded with our agenda, I'm just double-checking here, concluded with our agenda for today, and thank you very much. We are adjourned.